But he, he pulled it up and paused it and zoomed in on a truck's license plate that was driving by on the street between their parking lot and their school. So, they're good, they're good cameras. And overall, we're gonna spend about the same amount of money as what our previous quote was. But it's gonna be a lot cleaner looking, a lot more capabilities. It's, it's really about it.
One thing, Councilor, if we've had vandalism, we don't always promote it, put it out there, it occurred, but down at Sunset Park, Veterans Sunset Park, we had, I'm not gonna say kids, but somebody climbed on the roof of the bathrooms, ripped off the shingles, put them down the toilet. Obviously, you don't have cameras in the bathroom, but if you see kids on top of the roof, you're gonna find out who did it and hopefully prosecute them and they'll pay for themselves. Because we had to go in there and take out the toilet or, you know, unclog the drain, go put shingles back on the roof, so the roof don't leak. I mean, stuff like that happening, not acceptable. I mean, we need to protect our investments and especially the, the pool and the splash pad liabilities, there's a lot there. And these cameras could tell the story one way or another and affect us. You know, kids are running, they slip and fall, well, there's, you know, that lessens our liability in ways, especially if the camera shows it.
Pictures worth a thousand words and videos worth a million.
That's a lawyer telling you that right there. There'll be, um, there'll be, access can be at the police department, so they can actually pull them up and monitor them. But they really don't have to sit there and be watched all the time unless an incident happens, so we can go back and retrieve the footage. The ones here at City Hall, not after, but it's twenty-eight days until it's recorded over. So, about a month.
These new ones are two months.
There you go, sixty days, even better. So, like I was retrieving stuff from Sprite Fest last week, stuff here at City Hall with our cameras. So, it's kinda neat that we can go back and retrieve it, we need it, you don't have to sit there and watch it the whole time. No one has time to do that.
And you can have it on limited users on the software without an additional fee. And the other thing to note about camera systems, if you start researching them, a lot of places will sell you the camera and then you have to pay a yearly fee, a subscription fee to use the software to access them. And then if you switch companies, your camera's no longer working, you have to get all new stuff. But your hardware, your wiring and stuff like that would still work, but then you gotta buy brand new cameras. This isn't the case with this, if we ever switch from them, we could always use a different software. It's a one-time thing, we pay for the software, we get free updates for the life of it. So, it's no, it's, it's no, next year, we don't pay five grand more for the software because we're locked in. And just for transparency, it's the same way on the other cameras too. The software is not as intuitive and it's not as clean.
So, Council, do you have any questions for Brandon, myself? This did, oh, this did have a three, um, all four, actually Connie, you were here for it, wasn't he? This about, so I think, yeah, so it did have a, a, all four favorable recommendations from the ARP committee.
Yeah.
Clarification, because we've talked a lot about Sunset Park, but this is Sunset Park and Haggadon Park.
Yeah, it's both parks.
Yeah, Haggadon is basically the same cell speech I just gave, it's just a different place. The only thing that I'll add for Haggadon is, it's gonna cover the pool itself, as well as the pool parking lot, the new basketball courts that we put in there, or redoing, and then as well as pickleball courts.
So, alright, sorry Julie to interrupt you, you had a pen you didn't set.
I definitely hate thinking everywhere I go. I hate that. I'm out at a park with my granddaughter and I just hate thinking everywhere I go. We, we're just, and I know, I get it, I've got people doing bad things here and there. I just don't, I just don't like that.
The cameras at the dog park's a big deal because we had an incident two months ago. They're not in the bathrooms, so there you go.
I think it's a sign of the times, Julie, it's a sign of the times. We're not gonna live long enough to see that everywhere away.
Yeah.
Time's up, you go shopping, you're on camera.
Cameras?
You have as well, at an intersection, you're on camera.
We've got four cameras on in this room.
I mean, that's just, that's our society.
All the police officers have got them right there.
Yeah, they broke it off and threw it in the river or stole it, scrapped it, our park spent it, which is about a grand.
As well as the yellow posts that block traffic.
Oh, yeah, the yellow posts, they take those out of the ground for the walking trail, they throw them in the river. And they spray painted graffiti on the flat wall, inappropriate.
On the mural.
Murals, yeah, inappropriate.
Oh, my gosh.
What? Don't be down in a rain pack, you're gonna get caught.
I'm, I'm with you, Julie, I have this discussion with my kids and they think I'm some old codger for not liking these cameras, but I, I.
I get it with the Big Brother thing, I, I, I understand that, but we've gotta protect our investments and our liabilities too. You know, it's kinda, I get both sides of it, I understand, I do get where you're coming from.
I do too.
Nobody likes to be on camera all the time and have a camera in their face be recorded, but.
I would venture to say we're one of the few municipalities that don't have cameras on our pool.
Yeah.
I remember in Oakland City in nineteen fifty, I don't believe it was a camera around town then.
In people's houses.
Back then, people behaved.
The neighbor, the kid wasn't that far.
So, Council, I don't wanna try and wrap our meeting up because we've still got our budget stuff, we're gonna be here till ten o'clock and I didn't order dinner, so, of course all. So, uh, what do we wanna do on the camera system for Veterans Sunset Park and Haggadon Park? Cost is thirty-five thousand, is this gonna be something you wanna pass with motion of intent that Connie can advertise? And then Brandon can proceed with getting them ordered?
As well as eighty-six hundred for the PSC.
Oh, okay. No, that, that will allow wifi in the parks, which is nice, in those two parks. So, we'll do it in two, so two separate motions, then if that's okay for you.
What are you saying, Larry?
I support eighty-six hundred dollars of operational, or operations, of the ARP money for the next year or two. I don't think that's what's any sense. If we can't afford to operate a camera system without ARP money, then we don't need to be doing that.
That's fine, I'm not offended, that's, that's fine. So, let's just focus on the first one now, the camera system, Veterans Sunset Park, Haggadon Park, thirty-five thousand, is there a motion to approve that with intent? So Connie can go and advertise that and that gives Brandon the opportunity to move forward with these cameras. Motion made by Larry, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Gary, any further discussion? Hear none, we'll call for a vote, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, alright.
That was Julie.
Yes, alright. Now, wifi in the parks, Veterans Sunset Park and Haggadon Park, DSC, eighty-six hundred dollars, an extra year, is there a motion to approve? There's no motion, it dies for lack of that, so we'll just have to work on that in our budget somewhere. We may maybe come back for additional appropriations in our budgets to cover that, a regular operation, okay? Next, Sports Complex, we, it did get a, two, Connie had left, so there was one, get one vote against and two for. For, for favorable recommendations for five hundred thousand dollars to go towards Sports Complex. I don't know how much you all know about Sports Complex, but it is something that we've been working on for quite a while. We've even got our bonds, you know, part of that to go towards, it's gonna take a lot of money still, and this is just more money to put into it to make it happen.
We did get a ready grant for five hundred and ten thousand dollars a couple weeks ago. And I do plan on asking the ARP count down for five hundred also.
And then we're planning to apply for the DNR grant for five hundred thousand and, um, what's the baseball thing called?
Major league. No, big grant.
There you go, and some Lilly grants and others, we're really gonna try to make this happen. This will draw people to our community, this is an opportunity that we won't always get, to do something right, do it well, and bring people to the community. From outside, that will shop at our restaurants, eat, shop at our restaurants, shop in our stores, gas stations, stay in our hotels. I mean, some of these ball tournaments can go two days, three days, you know, depends on what kind of term it is and time of year. I think it's something that's important, um, I personally am not a baseball person, I don't even know how to play baseball, like, terrible at it. Philip plus two, right, we saw that today. I couldn't even bump the ball, I'm telling you, it's that bad. So, even on a tee ball, you know, I missed it. So, it's something for our kids, it's more than just baseball in there, there's walking trails, there's, um, disc golf, part of it. Playground equipment, new road into it, um, what else am I missing, Brandon? Obviously ties into the Haggadon Park.
Accessible, that's what they're coming right now, the, uh, the current park, if you have a walker or wheelchair, it's very cumbersome to try to get up there and watch a game. I've said that three years, maybe some time ago. But really, it's, it's having the ability to host tournaments in town, uh, draws huge, just to kinda put it in a little bit of perspective. I kinda heard Ryan Warner at the last tournament we had, because he didn't know that we were having a tournament, so he wasn't staffed expecting to look for customers. And it made his business look bad because people came there to eat and they got bad service because he wasn't staffed. So, he was mad at me for not letting him know, but learning experience over that. We actually have a tournament coming up in October, October ninth, uh, in tenth. He was the first person to text, so. He got a torn across, I got mine crossed, and so it's, that, that was operating with three fields. Had eight fields, imagine what that does to our community. He saw eighteen teams coming down. Which sounds like a lot, not really for tournaments.
I've got, oh, that's tight.
You know, you go to an eight field tour complex in Owensboro or Evansville, uh, rooting sixes. It's, it's a huge draw, especially if it's fast pitch, soft ball. It's astronomical to what it does for your community.
Yeah.
Yeah, in perfect world.
I can tell you as a dad, when I, when my girls played in those tournaments, the amount of money I would drop, drop at Owensboro, at Haoli, for God's sake, who has a fantastic complex. The amount of money I would drop. I can't even give you numbers other than to say that now I'm paying for the kids' college and it's a little more expensive.
I think I've been wrong with this one for sure, the couple of like complexes, but it's more of a single funds.
Almost certainly, yeah, and it's, and I'm, I'm.
Don't get me in the net.
I was standing, I paid for it.
That's another hot topic for me. Equal distribution of each casino fund.
I, I, I support board conferences, I'd like to support board districts for, for reasons. One, is the ready funds, I don't know if you're aware of this, uh, but the ready funds are ARP funds. Those are American Rescue Program funds that the state of Indiana got, that the district area process, so. Already getting ARP funds through the state of Indiana, uh, for four spots. But the main reason I support it is I would like to get a total budget and, and, well, what would it? You know, I get it, I saw one place for the, uh, lighting for the complex, one point six million.
That's the only budget number that we had now.
Okay, okay.
And the, the reason that, that's our other. And I love the job you're doing and you're doing a great job, but I just can't support it. So, the only reason I'm asking for five hundred thousand now, without anybody doing that is, to be completely transparent, because if we don't earmark five hundred thousand out, that money's gonna go. And then that's five hundred thousand more that I gotta try to fundraise once my plan is through, so. Plans can't be set or approved, uh, the general design has been approved by the board, but that doesn't mean anything because so much of that property is in a floodway, which is completely different than a flood plain. So, if you put up this railing line here in the outfield of one of those fields right now, uh, facing by Winnie Creek, they treat that as if you put up a brick wall with, with no water tanks. So, it can be a chain of fencing, if you put any kind of fencing, they treat it as a block level. So, then when you change that flood plain on that side, now you're raising it on the other side. So, we've been fighting this for, since February.
Probably.
One of the big things that happened was once Calvin Cash's crew started talking to DNR about what our plans are, what we're trying to do, where we're trying to put roads, where we're trying to put parks, where we're trying to put fields and all this. It raised the eyebrows of, well, how did you get this walking trail? Those walking trails aren't supposed to be, they weren't approved through DNR, they're in a floodway. And that was way before my time.
Way before all of them.
But now we have to try to explain how we got that there and still ask them to do us a favor by allowing us to put more stuff up there. You know, so they see, okay, well, the city went behind our back, did this, and now they're asking us to do some other stuff, so. Calvin's confident that we'll get work through it, uh, but as I said, in the ARP committee, in a worst-case scenario, DNR comes back and says, no, absolutely not, we're not doing any of this, it's none of your plans. That current Sports Complex could use three and a half million dollars just to redo it, that's, it's not ADA compliant for sure. Lighting is okay on three out of the four fields. Concessed sand slash bathrooms are way undersized, those aren't ADA compliant. Score boxes, drainage, huge issues, fencing, huge issue. So, you're looking at a lot of money just to revamp what we have, if that's what we end up having. And since its grandfathered in, we're allowed to replace the fence, we're allowed to do those things, there are areas, as long as we don't make them a different for, for.
I didn't know what the lighting cost was gonna be, but there at the former Little League Park, we got lights, we got fencing, isn't that, can't, can't that be utilized? Is it, would it not be cheaper to move it out there and use it rather than buy all new equipment? What we're gonna do with lighting over there, just let it sit there, it's not lighting anything now, you know, it's not being used at all, that's not a, that's not a sports field anymore.
Right, right. Uh, it might be cheaper to front cost to do one or two fields, but it's not gonna match anything else you have, it's not adequate lighting, it's not good lighting, it's all, it's, if it gets turned off, uh, you're gonna spend a lot of money getting it turned back on. And the utility cost to run those is astronomically higher than an HID or LED. So, the LED return on investment would be dramatically faster, uh, if we had all the fields on, on, on one system. There's a, there's a study that shows how much flood, or the light comes off of those halogens, how much bleeds out to, it's basically wasted light. So, the new lights have a total light control, that, that, the light's better, they, they have a digital readout, how many sixteen pages of that stuff. But it'll show you how much light hits to your neighbors' houses, which is a big thing for them down there, I've had a couple people address that already, I actually just talked to a lady, uh, last, last Monday. About how much light's gonna be in her backyard or now, or with new lighting, or just what this is. The other, selling point on the new lights is a twenty-five yard warranty. They can, they monitor Oklahoma, they will call you and say, field two, pole three, second tier, third light, uh, it's starting to go wild, we'll send somebody out there and fix it. So, they'll call you and tell you that it's out, or that it's going out before you know it. And that's twenty-five yards, maintenance parts, a hundred percent. Relay goes bad, they send somebody else, it's no, it's not calling Logan Terry or Louis Holman or any other electricians to come out and diagnose it, they take it. And they will contract people like, like me, Logan Terry, so the business still stays local, but you're buying mine for the location.
Council, any other questions regarding this? I know it's a lot of money, but, you know, I think it's important that we do one nice big project of this, we've done a lot of, some medium sized, some smaller projects. But I'm just trying to see this community grow into something I think it can be and bringing people to the community, you know, show you a place you wanna visit, I'll show you a place you wanna live. And I want this to be a place where people just wanna visit and live.
Another economic plus would be we're going to get a new motel here, I believe in the next year or two. And that's gonna be a major income source on weekends for that new motel on Seventh Street.
Sure wouldn't hurt it, let's put it that way.
Certainly wouldn't hurt it, along with the other motels.
Having a nice park and a Sports Complex, it's not gonna hurt our community, it's only gonna help it, I think. Into, in, um, Brandon's done. How much have you put in Haggadon Park, I know we've done some scoreboards, um, it's been, we haven't put a lot into it because why invest a lot into if you're wanting to basically demolish it and start over? I mean, you're not, people don't wanna waste money with that, but Brandon's done the best he can with what he's had to work with.
We haven't really put a whole lot of dollars, city dollars into it, we put a lot of the, uh, the, uh, the league money into it, the league has bought the last two backstops at forty thousand a piece. We talked about being able to try to reuse those, but by the time you get them out of the ground, bust the concrete off, try to reset them, they, and, and plus their green bottom, I'm gonna get away from that, we don't wanna go to Calvin eyes, it's a, the longevity of it, green bottom flakes off of the fence, so. They, they, they're ready, we just replace it all.
We have that for fifty-nine dollars, a lot of the grass that's over there, or, or sixty-six thousand, which is a quick, a lot of over there.
Any other, is there a motion to approve that, Council, at all, or any other discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve that, I'm gonna let you for the park.
Got a motion made by Gary, do you hear a second?
That's only taking five hundred thousand.
Yes.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Got a motion made by Gary, second by Philip, any further discussion? Hear none, we'll call for a vote, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, did you get that, Connie? Porta month, yep. Alright, Brandon, anything else?
My three org.
Oh, oh, yeah, oh, alright, I'm on, keep going, my batteries are running dead on my camera server. Listen to, wait, I can probably charge one up in a minute, I really don't want to. Alright, Brandon, I'll let you, you have a Parks and Rec Director, mower request for budget, item D in our new business.
So, I talked a little bit about this in the, in the budget meeting, and I, I know it's a sticker shock, it's a mower at sixty-four thousand dollars, uh, it's twelve foot wide, zero turn. Very similar to the eight foot wide, zero turn that we have right now. And I just kinda wanted to give you an idea of what I'm looking at, why I'm looking at it, so you don't just say, okay, Brandon wants a sixty-five thousand dollar mower, what's wrong with the thirty thousand dollar mower he has? And to answer that question, there's nothing wrong with it, no, no. So, the, the twelve foot, the one, one we have is eight foot, we mow eighty-five acres, when I was told by Mo Harvey, I, I didn't calculate it, uh, but it's eighty-five acres before we started to take over some other properties. Uh, since recruiting has been out, we, uh, we picked up eleven properties, a lot of his are really small properties, so they're, they're not that big. But we spend four days a week mowing grass, we have a part time guy that works every day from eight to noon that helps us, and then Doug James and I are mowing about seven hours a day, eight to three. The time we spend, I did time studies on every mower that I mowed, and back when I was doing my homework on that ninety-six inch, I, I don't, I don't remember the numbers of what, what we took, but I can tell you that. To mow the practice football field on the sixty-one inch gag that we had when I started, took over four hours. Then we graduated to this ninety-six, so we went up three feet and cut, and we took the time down from over four hours to under two hours with one person. So, if you look at math, you're looking at it and you're going, okay, well, you didn't, you didn't double your mower size, but you, you're telling me that you saved half the time? I know it doesn't make sense, but it's, it's all about the efficiency, it's about every time you make a pass, how efficient it'd be. Uh, the rule of thumb is you're losing ten percent, so if you have a five foot wide mower, you're gonna lose five or ten percent of that. Well, if you have a ninety-six inch mower, you're also gonna lose five percent of that, because you're over. But the time it takes to stop, turn around and come back, stop, just however many passes it takes, is really where you're losing the time. So, the mow speed, mowing speed is important, uh, I did all the calculations on the sixty-one, I did the ninety-six, I did the hundred forty-four inch, I did all these, I did them in gas, I did them in diesel, I did, uh, demos of everything, uh, demoed all the brands. But if we had the twelve footer, could still use our eight footer, two guys, we would mow more, there were four of us mow right now with three sixty-inch cuts and one ninety-six. So, we're going from four feet to two feet. Why that's important is, I'm not gonna have time, this Sports Complex takes off, I really don't have the time right now, I neglect a lot of other things, uh, I'm not prepared for meetings as much, because I'm out mowing grass all day. So, it really comes down to, do you wanna hire two and a half more people, pay benefits and insurance, have them go mow grass and succeed if you cut mowers or cut the cheap people? Or can't we just buy a bigger mower and have them first person mow the grass?
Sorry, I don't have any, I know you said you had lots of calculations. Looked at it, do you have any idea how much time you would save? Maybe over the course of a month, heavy mowing? How much more efficient are you gonna be, how much, I know the city boy is quite expensive for hours, so I mean, we could essentially save a lot of money.
Yeah, even if they're paying twenty dollars an hour, the cost of the employee is still probably closer to forty dollars, by the time you add benefits and, and all that stuff, insurances and.
How long does this mower last?
It has a five-year warranty, unlimited hour, five-year warranty, same as the one we have, uh, it's a diesel, it's a lot less fuel, I know diesel expense is more than the gas. Our ninety-six and the gas, they bogged down quite a bit, if the grass gets too tall, if we can't keep up with it, uh, but it still does a pretty good job. The time savings, I, I didn't finish it, on that practice football field, so the ninety-six, it took it down to, to less than two hours. On the twelve footer, first time I ever mowed it, that's the first place I mowed and it took me thirty-nine minutes. It doesn't, it's not gonna take long, and there's gonna be places that doesn't fit, like, I'm not gonna be able to take a twelve foot mower and get into a telephone pole of a street ring.
Not on both City Hall Park with it.
Yeah, I can mow City Hall though.
It's just a minute.
It wouldn't be feasible, because it's, there's so many things to turn around.
There's a lot of obstacles to trees.
It'd take longer unloading it than what it would take to mow.
My brain probably don't like all my trees on one.
That one has a high gear, so we don't even have the trailers out, uh, we should trailer it, a lot of our, our smaller mowers should take a long time to get to Joe Shaver Park.
Oh, yeah.
But this one has a high gear, you can't mow in high gear, it'll go nineteen mile an hour. So, I can ride out there, probably be there by the time it takes, load it up, drive out there. But the places that would work, the places like Joe Shaver Park, uh, that Roy Fenton, Juanas, Tiger Mike Park, all the fields especially. Tennis Press, Sunset, we started mowing from the boat ramp all the way to some molars that used to be bush hogging a couple times a year, we mow all that now. So, there's a lot of places that it would work, save time, and I honestly think, contrary to what one of my guys thinks, I feel like we could probably get all of our mowing done by day, except for places like the depot and City Hall, because they're so, we have so much trending. We need to be blowing off, but most of our other parks are pretty wide open as far as getting in and get out.
Now, Brandon, do you mow the levee or does park, or street apartment mow the levee?
Street, they're not allowing to mow the levee, it has to be a separate.
That's what I was afraid of, that'd be nice to mow the levee, I'm just saying, we'd have that done in five minutes.
How high does it have to be? That's a certain high power.
See, the, the lowest, the real turns goes to five.
Bummer.
Or the highest.
Well, that'd be handy for that, wouldn't it? Yeah, be a levee, I just think that's something you know, you can go at it with.
But there's other places in town now, but right now, you guys go over the hotel, uh, the apartments.
No, we don't mow the apartment ones anymore, but we're not going to be anymore, since everybody's started moving the dirt, so.
The places like, if they have.
Sure, level, good level flat places with five lot obstacles is ideal.
Yeah, and, and it does really well on hills, the ninety-six does better on the hills than our, our sixty inches do. It's a lower center of gravity, all the weights on the wheels, as long as you don't turn and go that face downhill, you're pretty good. You don't wanna go straight up. You don't want to go straight up hill.
Counselor, do you have any questions for Brandon? I'm not trying to cut him off, just keep us on in our timeframe.
Have you ever mowed a little contract right now?
No, we have not. I, it has crossed my mind, but I think of Wendy Creek some days, but no, we have not. I can, how do I do that? What's that?
This is why I want to mow. Because I have over a hundred percent of projects that I want to be in our current parks. Some of the stuff is broke minimum. It's like paint pole, you know, basketball pole and things like that. This is the stuff that I don't have time to do because I'm mowing grass.
Yeah.
Well, I, I, I wish, uh, your, your first person would be cutting the grass. Uh, so I don't know.
We can look at that.
We should look at it, you know, sixty five thousand dollars is a lot of money.
Let me look, I don't even know where to start on that, but I'll try to figure it out. How's that sound?
When, when would you take delivery on the mower if you bought it? Is it available right now or is this something we're waiting on?
No, and I'm not even looking for approval or not. I'm just trying to get, I just want to, I want the council.
I didn't want to throw a wrench in your argument on that. I just, that's always one of those questions that pops in my mind.
If it's my understanding, and I might be wrong, I think the school contracts out there mowing. Right? And it's because they can contract it out cheaper than them actually mow it themselves.
That's all about a buy off.
I don't know about that stuff, but, uh, I'll look in.
I'll get re-pot, oh, the practice football field, correct?
Yep.
Yes.
I detect.
Does the school pay us anything for mowing?
Uh, as argued, but yeah. Yeah. They, they have the best deal in the country as far as.
We own baseball park, um, I agree.
We own everything that you use. That's City Hall.
And they do lease that. They pay us sixteen, eighteen thousand a year from like, huh?
Sixty.
Sixty thousand? Sixteen, yeah, that's what I thought. Okay.
For a, for a.
Yeah, yeah, and that's something Brandon and I, when he says he don't have time to, you know, that's something he and I have to set up and work on since he's out mowing.
That contract interests.
Needs work. Um, and I don't want to get into the weeds and that, so I'm going to try to reel this back in a little bit. Is, any council members have any question for Brandon regarding this, then we can kind of get on our budget. Because what he just brought to you is part of the whole budget thing, so it's kind of why I want to get in the next part of it. Okay. Brandon, thank you.
Thanks.
Now, everybody got their folders or budget books? Phillip, I'll share with you.
Yeah, I got it.
That's fine. No, it's okay. We, I'm going to share. Oh, okay. Alright. We left it, we needed to cut thirteen thousand.
Correct. But then we have a couple of, uh, changes that have come, that have, uh, and so I have, I'm reading that and I'm taking those changes by, uh, posing to me. Put it that way and, uh, then if you decide to go with those, then you have a little bit more to cut. Uh, yes, we had shown that you had thirteen thousand cut. Uh, we did receive, everyone did receive an email from, from there requesting that, that the salary that was put in your book for the parks director for that to be increased.
Did everybody get my email? I know we're changing my emails. Did everybody get that? I hope Larry did get it. I, I, I kind of did that at the last minute on you and I apologize for that. You know, I sat down with our park director and I looked over it and we worked on that stuff a little bit here and there and.
So we had a current, when, when I prepared budgets and put them in the computer, we had put in forty nine thousand, seven forty three for the salary. And now it's asking to be increased. It's an, it's additional five thousand, five hundred and sixty six dollars.
Yeah.
Is what it increased. Then when we originally started working on budgets and that, it was suggested that the salary for the clerk treasurer be increased to what the mayor is making. And I have looked at those figures and I just, personally, I just feel that's too big an increase for any one person to be making. So I am suggesting if he would choose to do anything far raised for my position, that it would, uh, go up from fifty five thousand a year to fifty nine thousand a year. And the portion that I paid out of the general fund, that would reduce that by a thousand percent and thirty three. So by making these changes, you would have to cut sixteen thousand, nine ninety four within the general fund budget. To get anywhere I need to be close to my max levy, far no sheer tax.
And you'd have to cut more if you want to include the mower for the street, excuse me, the cemetery and parks. And also for the parks and rec. And I don't know those two totals off the top of my head.
The cemetery mowers about seven grand, I think.
Six, seven.
Yeah, I thought six, seven. But what does, round it up to seven is what you want.
Seven thousand plus, like, eighty cents.
Right, right, right here.
Oh, I do too, too.
Thank you, Larry. I owe you, Larry. You got both of them. So there you go. The park, parks and rec, I got that one. Thank you. I realized, what was this? Sixty three, nine, sixty four thousand. I'm not going to say that.
So if you choose to do those in the general fund, then you're going to have to cut a lot more. Uh, I don't know if you want to try, you know, I, all the other budgets, I, like your Kincap and Kincap Improvement, Riverboat, I, I pretty well got those worked out, that it has left a, uh, a little bit of an operating balance in those for next year. So I, I, I don't know where, you know, I could try to rework something. If you choose that you want to take it out of two or three different budgets or what you're, what you all want to say.
Does anybody have a chance to look over their budget books and get an idea where they would want to cut? Thir- thirteen, seventeen thousand, let's just say seventeen thousand. Because I'm worried about six dollars in this case.
You're not, but.
Well, six dollars, I.
But I.
Seventeen thousand, round it up to, easy math. Seventeen thousand and if you want to, look at the mower for Parks and Rec or the cemetery, both, they must cut a lot more. First, I would start with cutting your sixteen nine, your, your seventeen thousand, then if you want to cut more, get the other two if you want them, then go from that. That's.
And I, and I think last year possibly we did look at each budget. I don't know if you want to do that this evening. I do apologize. When I had this special meeting, I thought it was just a meeting for budgets. And then more things started coming up and that's why we've had so much on agenda for tonight. And it's lasted till like three o'clock. So I thought, I didn't think it would last this long. So I don't know how you all want to do it. You have to let me know. Uh, but, but whatever you pretty well decide tonight and what I can do, uh, then if, if you will vote on this at the October ten, ten, eighteen.
I'm tired of letting you all talk. Larry, I know you've had to find something to cut there.
Yeah, I, I, I just, I'm having this suggestion. I think, I can't think of all of it, but, um, my suggestion is we have, we have, we have twenty five thousand dollars. My suggestion is hopefully we take all the original thirteen thousand and now the seventeen thousand. We reduce this, we reduce the animal shelter. We have not used that past three years.
I think we am coming at twenty twenty from where I remember. But if the county, and I, I hope they get the animal shelter going. I, I agree. That's what I was going to say, yeah.
Uh, that is on page twenty five.
Thank you.
We're more relevant to this than Connie, who says by, by ten, ten thousand.
And, and the reason that I did reduce that and, and some of the other things is, maybe I should, we have been able to put in a four percent raise for county employees.
City.
City. I'm tired.
We're not, we're not.
City employees, mo- most of them has a four percent rate raise. There are some exceptions.
So currently we have thirty five thousand dollars sitting in that fund that they need to go to the animal shelter today. Can we, can we reappropriate that and then, uh, okay, I'm going to go ahead and then use it next year if we, as long as we have something we're going to purchase with it?
If you don't, if you don't use it this year, that cash carries over and then you can appropriate that cash for something for next year. You could not carry it over in the animal shelter.
Right, right.
You have to have a contract before you would carry it.
Right, right. There we go, what she said. So we can use last year's money, but in the next year if we need to fill in something else and then re-deduct like you said. Does that make sense? Hope, just right, right?
Yes, 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 yes.
Reappropriate this year's allocation.
So they can give your calculations. So, did you, your calculations?